Yep. Okay.
We can go with this camera.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but it's nothing special. We can try that.
Another fun fact, Dawson City in Yukon was the hottest spot in Canada today.
Yukon.
We're gonna go. All right, I think we have our technological problems solved, so I'm gonna call this meeting a Perth Town Council to order. We're at twenty-two-six and it is, this is the seventeenth meeting in two thousand twenty-two and we're called to order, like I said, about six forty. And I'd ask at this point in time if any members of council have any disclosures of pecuniary interest or general nature there up, councillor Bird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in relation to, it's actually item number sixteen-point-one, motion twenty-two dash one-four-four, police services board motion for consideration, I'm employed by the OPP, so I will not be speaking or voting on that.
Sixteen-point-one, yes, okay. Okay, thank you. With the close session today and the close session is, has to do with proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And so could I have a motion to move that to the end of the agenda? Moved by councillor Bird and seconded by councillor Brown, all those in favor? Thank you, that's duly moved and seconded and we'll move that to the end of the agenda. Presentations and awards, we don't have any. We do have, I had one declaration this evening and I'd be happy to read that in. And it has to do with natural drowning prevention, National Drowning Prevention Week. Whereas the Mission of Life saving, Lifesaving Society of Canada is to prevent drowning throughout this great country. And even one drowning in Ontario is one too many. And whereas most drownings are preventable in a water-smart community and only through water-smart education and healthy respect for the potential danger that any body of water presents, may present, can we genuinely enjoy the beauty and recreation opportunities offered by these bodies of water? And whereas the Lifesaving Society urges Canadians and residents of Perth, Ontario to supervise their children who are in and around water to refrain from drinking alcoholic beverages while participating in aquatic activities and always wear a life jacket when boating. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly passed the UN Resolution on Drowning A slash seven-five-L seven-six and named July twenty-fifth of each year as World Drowning Prevention Day. And whereas the Lifesaving Society of Canada has declared July seventeenth to twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two National Drowning Prevention Week to focus on the drowning problem and the hundreds of lives that could be saved this year, therefore be resolved that I, John Bennet, Mayor of the town of Perth, do hereby proclaim July seventeenth to the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two National Drowning Prevention Week in Perth, Ontario, and do commend its thoughtful recognition to all Perth citizens. So I'm happy to make that declaration this evening. And we have up next the consent agenda, councillor Smith.
That the following bylaws and motions listed below and the consent agenda be passed and numbered accordingly.
So council has a number of items on the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that we pull three of those items and councillor Smith, I believe you've got two of those items to pull.
I do, I have all three if you want me to do the third one. It's eight-point-one-point-six, bylaw number five-zero-four-one, appointment of a building inspector, Shane Atkinson. And eight-point-one-point-seven, bylaw number five-zero-four-two, award of contract for design and construction of fifth submerged detached growth reactor, Sager, J.C. Sulfur Construction Limited. And eight-one-point-eight, bylaw number five-zero-four-three, amending agreement of the Small Communities Fund grant for a fifth cell of Sager.
Great. So councillor Smith has moved that we pull those three items out of the consent agenda, could we have a second for that? Okay, all those in favor of pulling those out? Thank you, I'm going to call a question on the consent agenda. All the items remaining in the consent agenda, yes, deputy mayor.
The borrowing motion for I know I've just, I just read it a second ago.
For the reports to come back, deputy mayor? Is that?
No, we made a motion that Cal would go ahead with having a report done for borrowing. Is it, should it not be in the consent agenda? I was just looking at it a minute ago.
It's in eight-point-two.
It was in there, I remember seeing it.
Sorry, it's agenda item eight-point-two-point-nine, is that the one you have come for?
Eight-point-two-point-nine of the consent agenda, has to do with the asset management plan.
Yes, no, it's eight-point-two-point-eleven. If I could have that one pulled too.
All right, we're gonna pull that one too. Moved by deputy mayor, can I second that that motion item be pulled from the consent agenda? Thank you councillor Smith, all in favor? Okay, okay, we have four items to discuss, I'm going to call everything else that's left in the consent agenda. All those in favor of the consent agenda, the items that are left? That's carried. And we'll work, we'll work right down the, right down the line on this. Eight-point-one-point-six, the appointment of a building inspector Shane Atkinson, I believe there's been an amendment in the terms of, how are we going to do the terms of the agreement, madam clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so the township of Tay Valley was requesting that clause G, which would have the appointed building inspector act in the event of an emergency within the town, they would like that clause removed. So if council is in agreement, we could have that as an amendment to the bylaw and then pass the bylaw as amended, please.
Are people okay with the, the explanation around that? Okay, let's put that back on the floor, are you gonna move that?
Yeah, I would like an explanation of it.
Yeah, so.
So the township just would like that removed, so if the town was in a state of emergency and the chief building official was away, that their acting building inspector would not be involved with the town's emergency, declared emergency, that another staff person from the town would assume the duties.
Good, understand.
Okay, great, I understand that too, could we have a second on the motion on the floor? All those in favor? Deputy mayor?
I don't know who can answer this question, but originally we talked about bringing another building inspector on, I think the CEO said because of the workload and, and the new fees would be covered, the new expenses would be covered as by generating the fees and stuff. But it sounds like we're only going to use this person when our building inspector is off on vacation. Are we, that seems to be a little bit different than when we first discussed this, that, that we're so busy here now, we need two people working here? So is this person gonna be working here or just on vacation?
So this bylaw is to appoint the township of Tay Valley's building official to fill in for vacancies for our current CBO only.
Okay, because we talked about succession planning and the workload and stuff and I'm not sure how this really addresses, I know our CEO's got his hand up. I guess I'll leave it up to him to explain how this addresses the current workload on our C, on our building inspector.
Michael, welcome and you have the floor.
Thank you, pass it through the chair, this position is separate from the one that council has already approved, that position is posted internally right now for that full-time position, which we are in the short term going to share with our cell services department. This one here is in addition to that and it's only in the event that our current CBO and/or the, the other person are away at the same time. Okay, so we're still moving ahead with the other one, this is a secondary to that.
Thank you councillor Brown.
I could elaborate on that a little, I talked to Brian Gass today and and the building department is in it up to their ears. It takes four to six weeks to get a building permit because they have so many files on the go. They've got a hundred and thirteen files now, just up to the middle of June. Last year our total number of files was just over two hundred, so we're looking at double the number of permits or projects this year. So, yeah, the, the process for is just finishing internally from looking for someone and then we'll advertise externally that building officials are at a qualified or at a premium.
Yep, absolutely, thank you for that information, so we're gonna move on to eight. Okay, so we're looking to pass this as an amended motion, so it could have a mover and seconder on the building one. Thank you councillor Brown, councillor Smith, all those in favor, carried. In regards to bylaw or item one-point-seven, eight-point-one-point-seven, bylaw number five-zero-one-two, award of contract for the design and construction of the Sager. I'm going to ask Grant to come forward and.
Yeah, so if we can move to fourteen-point-one now and deal with that.
Yeah, so we'll go with fourteen-point-one on the agenda. Yes, you have the floor, please.
So, Mr. Chair and council, following the committee, the whole meeting, we were contacted by one of the contractors that were bidding on the Sager project for the fifth cell. And they were the original bidders and felt that the proponent or the recommended contractor being sulfur may have left out an item. So we called both parties back to the table to review their submissions and indeed sulfur had missed an item and in turn has rebid the contract. And the scubs of amount that is identified as well beyond budget and therefore I'm not recommending proceeding. We're approaching two million plus with a number of unknowns at this point, so I am not recommending that we proceed with that fifth cell at this point. There is no current, no current operational challenges. We're running well within the range of the Sager and the lagoon system, so there is no need at this point to proceed on.
Okay, well, that's disappointing, certainly, and it's not a critical need right now, but it seems that COVID pricing is in effect all over and, and anyways, it's gonna cost much more than we thought it would. There's a motion I'm gonna put on the floor and we'll have some discussion on this. Councillor Smith, you have the motion under staff reports, fourteen-point-one?
Fourteen-point-one?
Yeah, fourteen-point-one.
Be it resolved that the council of town of Perth not authorize bylaw, by bylaw up here. Okay, be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth declined the proposal submitted by Sulfur Construction Limited for the construction of the fifth Sager cell at the Perth wastewater facility as presented in report twenty-twenty-two, council seven dot one.
So that was moved by councillor Smith and seconded by deputy mayor McPherson, discussion on this, yes councillor Bird?
To me, it's relatively straightforward, you, you said disappointing, I, I, I support that, but we were quite firm on the money and what we budgeted against what we were getting for the grant. And this is beyond us at this particular time.
It is. Deputy mayor?
So, million dollars left on the table, what's your plan? I mean, we started with the sump pump, do we have another fallback idea, we could, I hate to give away a million dollars.
Do the chair, I hate to give away a million dollars too, obviously. The, the terms and conditions of the original grant were that if we were to transfer, it had to be into a project that was the same intent as the original sump pump disconnect, which was wastewater protecting the Tay. So the Sager was our next and actually only current option that fit the criteria from the, the funding body.
Yeah, so I'll ask the same question I asked at county council, we were, we were just faced with a very similar situation at county council where we had money identified for a project and we're not gonna follow through in that project and, and I made the comment, why don't we contact the granting bodies and say, is there any way we could use this money for something else in our water system or whatever, or perhaps for roadwork that deals with water and sewer and see what they say, instead of just saying we're giving up. Like I, I'd like our staff to have the permission to contact the granting body and say we've got a couple of other ideas we might be able to use this for, is the grant still there?
Yes, sir.
And certainly we can try that, the discussion that took place with the granting body to get them to move it to the Sager cell took months.
Well, I think it's worth a shot and so I agree, but councillor Cameron?
I'm not positive about this being right, but are we not dealing with water or sewage when we're dealing with the building where they're removing the one nursing home, aren't we into funds over there for water and sewer because we're having to do a lot of money over there?
That is a water and sewer will eventually be a water and sewer project, the, the problem is, is that when we sign the agreement authorizing, accepting a million dollar grant?
Yes.
There are very specific conditions attached to that.
Yes.
And we did a juggling act with going from the sump pump disconnect project and going, okay, how can we save a million dollars? And we jumped into the Sager. And so we've got to find, we've got to ask them if there's something else we can, we can funnel the money towards, I think it's a good idea that deputy mayor has just
I just thought about water too.
Yeah, we may, we may not get it, but that's fine, councillor Brown?
So first of all, I would make a motion that we ask staff to investigate other areas where we might be able to use that million dollars. Secondly, a question, unless you wanna ask for a second or first?
No, I think what I'm going to do is a point of order right now, we have a motion on the floor that was moved by councillor Smith and seconded by deputy mayor McPherson. Be it resolved that the council of town of Perth declined the proposal submitted by Sulfur Construction Limited for the construction of the fifth Sager cell at the Perth wastewater facility as presented in report twenty twenty-two, council seven point one, so I'd like to dispose of that, so we can keep a orderly transition of what we're doing. I appreciate where you're going councillor Brown, I'm gonna call the question on the construction of the site yourself. All in favor of the motion to decline? That's carried unanimously. Councillor, you have the floor, if you wanna put a motion?
I will repeat the motion that staff be asked to search for other avenues where we could possibly apply the one million dollar grant and, and report back to us in August.
Yeah, second on that motion? Deputy mayor is seconding that motion, any discussion on councillor Brown's motion to go back to the ministry and say, hey, is there some way we can salvage this? Seeing no discussion, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor, oh, sorry, councillor, councillor Burns.
Thank you. Just a slight modification, the ministry might not be able to respond by August.
Okay.
So I, I've no problem asking them, but SCF might just actually say they don't know that quickly.
Yeah, okay.
Consider that a friendly amendment.
Okay, all those in favor of that again, okay, thank you, thank you councillor Brown.
So I had a question also.
Yeah.
So down the road, talking to the CBO today, he emphasized the fact that, you know, growth is happening at quite a large scale and that what's, what his words were was that what's happened in Carl Place is gonna happen here. So we could potentially down the road be looking at the need for another cell in the lagoon. I'm wondering in regard to the asset management plan, would we put that in the asset management plan at this time?
Sir, you have the floor, good question.
So the, the asset management plan basically deals with only assets currently owned. Strategic assets being added after the fact, don't fall under the legislation.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, good question, though I thought in terms of the second part of the staff report number fourteen, there's a motion by councillor Smith on the books and seconded by the deputy mayor that be resolved that the town of Perth not authorize bylaw, the amending agreement with her majesty, the queen in right of Ontario as represented by the Minister of Infrastructure for Small Communities Fund in the amount of a million dollars, so in fact that motion is saying we're gonna give the money back. Could I have a motion to defer that? Moved by councillor Bird, seconded by deputy mayor, so in the agenda, if we, we pass the deferment, we may have to come back to this motion at some point, so we're just putting in suspended animation.
Through you, just that that bylaw is specific to funding the fifth cell and that's why it's, that's why it's worded that way.
Yeah, but we're, this is the money we were gonna send back, right, the million dollars?
Yes, but this bylaw is, is approving the funding for the fifth cell specifically. So if there was another project, there would have to be another bylaw done anyway.
Sorry, let me read this. Be resolved that council town of Perth not authorize the bylaw amending agreement with her majesty. This. I'm having trouble following.
Sorry, through you, so this bylaw, if, if it were passed, would be to have the million dollars applied to the construction of the fifth cell for the Sager, it's specific to that project, so that's why it's being proposed not to go through.
So we aren't in fact saying we're sending back, we're out of the grant business, the million dollar grant by passing that?
So, so what we're saying essentially is we, we're not signing a contract with SCF for the funding to be used for the Sager cell.
Okay, so we can deal with that. Yes, and we should deal with it. So in the second part of that, councillor Smith, you've moved that and deputy mayor, you've moved that, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? Carried, sorry for the confusion, folks on that. All right, so we're gonna go back in the agenda, what do we wanna do with these two here? Okay, so we pulled eight-point-one-point-seven out of the out of the consent agenda, so could we have a motion to put that on the floor and will I have to ask council to decline that, not support it, councillor Brown? You're gonna move that?
Thought we were moving to eight-point-two discussion of the asset management plan?
No, no, what we're, what we're going to do is there were two other items pulled out from the consent agenda and there's a fourth one that I think the mayor has, so.
So I don't understand the question you're asking me.
I'm asking council if someone would move that we put eight-point-one-point-seven on the floor to vote on it?
Okay, yes.
Moved by councillor Bird, seconded by councillor Brown, all in favor? All opposed? So we're opposed on that? And then I'm looking for someone from council to move eight-point-one-point-eight, the bylaw number five-zero-three, five-zero-four-three, the amending agreement for the small communities. We just did. Yeah, voted it down. Okay, and that, so the next item pulled from the consent, thank you, moved by councillor McPherson, we're gonna vote on a negative on this as well, moved, seconded by
Somebody.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you councillor Brown, this is a bylaw amending agreement on Small Communities Grant Fund for the fifth Sager cell. All those in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay, so the fourth item on the consent agenda, deputy mayor, you have that on the floor, did you wanna comment on that?
Sure. I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion, add the wording and options of ten million dollars. So right currently the motion is fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, I'd like to add the, the wording ten million to that motion.
A forecast on ten million, and, okay. Deputy mayor has moved an amendment, would somebody like to put that amendment, or second that amendment? Thank you councillor Brown, any discussion on that? Councillor Brown?
So in general about borrowing money, we recently received a copy of the statement of the amount we had in reserves and the forecast, the projected amount in reserves as of December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two is seventeen million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two. My question would be how when the treasurer is doing his report about borrowing, if there will be some sort of acknowledgement about how much we have in reserves and that, how that might fill in, fit into the whole plan to finance things?
Yes, definitely, it forms part of the projection.
Great, we've got that covered. I'll go to councillor Cameron.
I believe, I thought that we were told by the director that going down as low as ten million was not really recommended as being a useful figure to look at, maybe he could talk to that for me, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, I, I think that councillor Cameron, I think we're going to have, this council or the next council is gonna have a very serious discussion about whether we're gonna borrow or not for our needs.
Yes.
Personally, I think it'd be helpful to see if a report of the ten, fifteen and twenty million, it'd be information, good information to have, to break down. So I, I'm supporting the amendment, did I get a second for that amendment, Susan? Yes, okay, so we're discussing the amended motion and Brock, you have a question, sir?
Yeah, you know what, I was, I was pretty much just gonna say the same thing as councillor Cameron, I believe the director pointed out last time we discussed this, that ten million wasn't really a useful figure to look at, but yeah, so I won't be voting in favor of this.
Okay, councillor Bird?
Yes. That exactly what, what was discussed last time this came up and the range of figures that we were gonna look at. I do note that councillor Cameron did ask if that could be clarified by the director and he's right here, so I would also ask if that could be reiterated by him.
Sir, you have the floor.
So the rationale for the borrowing is essentially to, to remove the inflationary pressures, moving out the number of years by borrowing the money now and, and hopefully saving that money. At the ten million dollar range, the, it's not likely the savings are gonna be as significant as the higher dollar values. But I'm okay with using and so I think the ten million by itself probably isn't going to be something council's gonna consider. But I think we could use the ten million as a component part of the twenty, so that we, we do it in component parts and build it.
All right, councillor Brown?
I would say that the more information we have to make our decisions, the better. And I was in agreement with not using the figure of ten million, but that was before I knew how much we had in reserves and, you know, maybe we can, what can, well, if we decide tomorrow, money Well, if we decide tomorrow, money borrow as little as ten million dollars. So I think we need the information, how that would play out.
Yeah, this I I really wouldn't read too much into this. This is just the deputy mayor asking for some additional information. I I'd like to see that as well. I'm going to call. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Brian, sorry, Director, when is this report going to be ready?
Not till September.
Yeah, okay. I was just because we never, we actually never talked about that at the meeting or set dates and stuff. And so I think, you know, let's be realistic. I'm a month away from election in September. So if you think I'm voting to borrow ten or fifteen, twenty-five million dollars a month away from an election and tie the hands of the future council, I'm not doing that. Twenty-five million dollars makes the next council basically null and void because they're not going to have any money to do anything. I don't know if you understand that, but that's that's why I asked for all these different scenarios. Anyway, I I don't want the director to rush on this and I figured it would be a fall report because we're still talking about climate change, asset management plan issues and all these other things. So.
Yeah, and I think I think it's it's really important that I I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying, you know, I'm I'm opposed to borrowing. I'd like to see the figures, whether I'm a month away from an election or not, but I think it's really important that candidates, you know, say their piece on this and understand that we've got seven million dollars worth of infrastructure to work to be done at the at the water plant and understand it. MTO is going to be building that road on Highway Seven. Our portion of it is going to be six million dollars for water and sewer. So I but anyways, we're getting off track here. We've got an amendment. It's duly moved and seconded on the motion. I'm going to call. Okay, Counsel Brown?
Okay, it just triggered a memory in my mind when you mentioned about MTO and the work that they're potentially going to do. It's just that, you know, there seems to be a rush to get that information to the MTO. And when the fellow was here that night, he said, nah, the money's not even in the budget yet. Nah, it could be. It could be twenty twenty-six, might be later than that. So I don't understand why we're rushing to meet their requirements.
Right, and we can discuss that for sure. We can discuss we can discuss that at future Cal meetings and when we meet again. All those in favor of the amendment? One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? Two opposed, three opposed? Okay, that passes. I'm going to ask for the motion as amended. Now I'm going to call a question on the motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion as amended? That's full.
It's already on the floor, right?
Can I have a mover and seconder for the motion as amended? Judy, thank you. Counselor Smith, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion as amended?
I would like to ask for a recorded vote, please.
Okay, through the chair, we're going to ask for a recorded vote on this motion as amended.
For the report on borrowing is amended. Mayor Finnick?
I.
Deputy Mayor McPherson?
I.
Counsel Bird?
Nay.
Counsel Brown?
Yea.
Counsel Cameron?
No.
Counsel McPherson?
Aye.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Carrie's five to two.
All right, the motion is amended. It's carried. So we're going to go back to our agenda. Keep in mind, folks, that this is the last meeting for the summer break, so let's keep things moving along. In regards to the, I want, and again, something funny is going on tonight in the water. I don't know. But in terms of the agenda, we have two items that have been added to the agenda that have been added under miscellaneous business. But we didn't amend the agenda as a motion. So the miscellaneous business that we've added is the correspondence from Ryle Conroy dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two relating to a zoning bylaw amendment on Fifty-Ninth South Street. And the other item added under miscellaneous business is the Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital emergency room situation and town council board appointment. Those are added under miscellaneous business. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Moved by Counsel Smith and seconded by Deputy Mayor McPherson. All those in favor? Carried. I don't remember mine. The minutes, the minutes of the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting was approved in the consent agenda. We have been notice required under the notice of bylaw, delegations and receiving committee reports. I'm going to go with Deputy Mayor.
Yes, sure. I should nothing major to report. Retented all my meetings. I did recently attend a Leonard County Police Service Board meeting. The overall discussion again focused on speeding across the entire county and what different communities are doing. I will let Council know they should receive an email from me that a resident on Joy Avenue had a concern about speeding on Joy Avenue. And I explained to her the work that Director Mahon's been doing around town with all the traffic counts and stuff. And I also asked for an OPP presence on the street and the OPP was on Joy Avenue the next morning. On top of that, the OPP have also installed their Black Cat device on Joy Avenue. It's a recording device that records speeds and number of vehicles, similar to what we have in the town of Perth. Also, the Ontario Provincial Police are adding two new devices to their toolbox. So one is they're going to have the automatic license plate readers installed on all of their vehicles. So if the police car is driving down the highway, it'll automatically scan any license plate coming towards them. It'll alert the officer if there's something to do with that plate. There's an outstanding warrant or something on it. You probably used to see or you may have seen these type of devices used, like for example, in the city of Ottawa, they had a couple on their cruisers. Big device sitting on the roof of the car. The new device OPP will have will be actually situated inside the vehicle, so you probably won't recognize it. The second thing the OPP are moving to, and it might happen in this region by early fall, is the officers are now be wearing body worn cameras and they're being trained on them and they're being issued to all the officers across the province. So the last I heard was maybe this fall, September, October, for the Eastern Region officers will have the body worn cameras. And I asked about the backup systems and similar things. I've had a little bit of experiences in the past and and they've really revolutionized the system to make it a lot easier for them to record and to provide the public with the information for court proceedings and things like that. So two new tools for the OPP to use, especially in this region. And third, Inspector Pattiachi, want to assure everybody that there are officers on the street in the town of Perth. You will see them walking the 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 beat. There is one officer in particular, Corey Noonan. He used to be a former Perth police officer. He walks three designated routes in the town of Perth while he's on his day shifts. And you'll probably see Corey walking with one of their officer fairly often. And today I did know I did ask the OPP in the past or Inspector Pattiachi to that, working with our Director Environmental Services and with the council's information about, we've warned the people about speeding in the town of Perth. And you're probably going to see a few more cruisers around the town of Perth. And for example, today, one was positioned right across the beer store on Wilson Street to see if anybody was going a little too fast on Wilson Street compared to what you're supposed to do. So the OPP have been really receptive to each time I've called them and 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 asked for some help. And I also notified Inspector Pattiachi about the issue with the vandalism with the playground in Stewart Park last week and asked for additional patrols through all of our parks. Because I usually ride my bike each evening through the downtown parks. And I do see we're, we seem to, again, having a group of individuals hanging out in Stewart Park especially. So hopefully, when they see the officer around, that'll maybe convince them to not do anything. That's my report.
Thank you for that report. Yeah, I've seen I've seen the officers walking the beat. It's really good. They're actually down Grant Street over to Conlon Farm and then down here, it's the, they've been very responsive. And thank you very much for your representation on the board and the work you're doing. Deputy Mayor, you had an additional comment?
Yeah, one further thing I should tell you is the Perth Police used to have two bicycles. They used to ride bike patrols in the town of Perth. And Inspector Pattiachi would like to go back to that and having bike patrols in the town of Perth. And just so happens that that I actually have the two former bicycles. I was able to get the the Rotary Club actually asked me several months ago to get the bikes back from the OPP. They were just in storage, so I did. So Inspector, and they are needing quite a bit of work. So Inspector Pattiachi is going to set up with Sergeant Croft in Carlton Place. They have a bike team and we'll probably get these bikes fixed back up and try and get them on the road in Perth, so the officers have more visibility again.
That's great. Thanks very much. Counsel McPherson, sir, do you have a report?
Thanks, Mr. Mary. Yeah, no, I've attended my regularly scheduled meetings as well, and I don't have anything to report at this time. I hope everybody at the town and all the citizens have a good July. We will be off.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Counsel Brown?
Sure. So, yeah, I meet once every two weeks with Joanna, the new Director of Planning and Development. And one of the interesting things that she told me is, I probably are all aware that we have a development support team where a developer can come in and meet with all of the heads of departments at once to discuss their proposal. Well, they were meeting once a month. Now there's so many people coming in that want to come in and talk to them that they have switched to meeting once every two weeks. Another indication of the tendency towards growth. Went on the Rita Valley Conservation Authority watershed tour last Tuesday. Counselor Bird accompanied me. Lots of neat information. The one that struck me the most was the woman who's in charge of doing the education programs at Foley Mountain. And she talked about the method of education they they use, which is really neat. They don't just bring the kids in and funnel in a bit of information. They encourage the kids to answer questions, which is, which is much more productive. Community improvement plan was last Wednesday. We had a couple more applications. We still got five or six thousand dollars left. But it's going fast. So anybody that wants to be, apply for facade improvements. I should get their application in. May twenty-sixth, I sat in on a webinar from a group called HIO, Hire Immigrants Ottawa. And I did that because I thought that perhaps, we all know there's a labor shortage in Perth and as there is everywhere else, I could find out how possibly to attract immigrants to to a smaller town. And when I mentioned that I was from Perth and asked that question, they said, oh, Perth has great fudge. Maybe you could use that to attract in the town. Don't think so. So I was last Saturday at a gathering in the little park in Perthmore. One of the goals of Mike Flynn, the president of the Perthmore Association, is to create more of a sense of neighborliness. So he just had this meet and greet where people could meet and talk to each other. It's a great initiative. And the last one on twenty-third of June was at a BIA gathering where downtown merchants that are members of the BIA can just come and meet each other and sit and chat and have a little bit to to eat and drink and worked out very well. Good turnout, met some new people, the merchants that have come to town that I didn't know about. And it was a great initiative. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Counsel Brown in regards to your report? So Counsel Cameron?
Okay, this past week or last week, I guess, I went to a very lovely Mexican luncheon at the fireplace, at the fire hall, I should say. Put on, I believe it was the people from the front office there.
Treasury.
Treasury. It was great. Saw some people I didn't know. Saw some people who had very good aim with the beanbag toss. It was lots of fun. I went to my regular meetings, except I missed the planning due to technical difficulties with my computer. I just, I was trying to zoom and it just didn't work out for me, so I didn't get to that one. But so that was my time, but everything else was good.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Counsel Cameron? Counsel Bird, sir, you have the floor?
Thank you. Apart from my regularly scheduled and the special committed the whole meeting, on the twenty-seventh of June, I attended the Friends of the Tay bench dedication. There were other members of council there. Thirty-first of June, that that was in Last Jewel Park. Thirty-first of June, I spied on the two, the installation of the two new flagpoles, which I think really worked well. And they seem to make the Crystal Palace pop as well, which is just a visual thing. Fifth of July, Sunday, the fifth of July, I attended the Legion Bench Dedication Service at the Senat. Two really interesting, nice benches with a a dearama or silhouettes on them. And I attended at the Legion afterwards for the event they had there. And then on the twenty-third, sorry, I C CIP, I was by phone. But Counsel Brown has covered that. And twenty-third, Rita Valley Yocup. Again, I was invited by Counsel Brown to that with the VCA. Fascinating stuff, really interesting stuff. Lots of references by staff to our staff, particularly Director Bail, seeking their advice and their input on issues that we have in town. The one that I took away is buffer zones in relation to water erosion, soil erosion by water and not just the loss of land, but nutrients from the soil. And that is something that we have installed as 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 town and worked on in the Last Jewel Park, and I believe will continue to. But the the community and electorate being willing, it is something I'm going to raise in the next council is something that we should promote more by our example and encourage perhaps residents on the waterways to do that. And Director Bayon, in conversation today, just mentioned, and I know it's a thorny issue, but the issue of Stewart Park, there is quite a bit of soil erosion in one particular part there. And so this this may be a, an intelligent way of dealing with that. That's also got an environmental aspect to it.
Yep.
And that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any questions in regards to Counsel Bird's report? Counselor Smith, you're up, sir.
I started the month off on the third by going to the Perthmore Walk with Director Bayon. We walked the, did the walkway and saw where the fences were going to go. The Heritage Perth Committee was canceled due to lack of agenda items on the twentieth. I attended the climate change meeting on the fifteenth, in which there was a presentation by Kim Leach that was very interesting. She's certainly knowledgeable about climate change and smart energy. The CIP meeting I missed due to a conflict with a a medical appointment. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. And I'm just going to, I attended a lot of meetings, but I'm I'm going to touch on two things. And I know we're talking about it under miscellaneous business, but I want to talk about the hospital. But I did want to comment, Counselor Smith, it was great seeing our new climate coordinator at that meeting. Abby Unsworth has started as a climate coordinator and I think she's going to do great things. And so so good for her. Thanks for being with us and look forward to the stuff that we do at that climate change panel for the rest of this term. So I attended a hospital board meeting this morning. But I'm going to back it up a little bit. On Monday, I received information that senior directors were going to recommend to the board, hospital board, that the Perth Emergency Room be closed primarily because of the lack of staff. And the information I received was fairly credible and the closure was going to take place July fourth. It would run until September twelve. And it would, the emergency department was to be closed from eleven o'clock at night till seven in the morning. So when I received that information, I immediately called the Director of the Hospital, Michael Cohen, and the Chair of the Board, Gardner Church. And I spoke with Deputy Mayor on Monday. And I can tell, folks, I was pretty worked up. I was really quite worked up on. And I can tell you, folks, I was pretty worked up. I was really quite worked up on Monday. And I made it clear that this was absolutely the wrong thing to do, that there were other solutions that could be and discussed. And I understand the critical shortage of nurses and healthcare staff. I get that. Every hospital is under the way, but there was no way that I was going to stand by and see our emergency, uh, ward temporary, temporarily closed during those, those hours. And then at the board meeting this morning, uh, staff presented a plan that basically said we're short staffed. The only thing we can do is, you know, we're looking at potentially closing Perth ER. And, uh, again, I got very worked up at that meeting, and I said, I absolutely will not stand for that. My community won't stand for it. This is about our community, the town of Perth. It's about our families. So, uh, we, we had a discussion, uh, at the hospital board. And I felt at that time that I couldn't act as a hospital board member and defend our Perth hospital site at the same time. That my time and energy, if this was going to be the direction of the board, was best being mayor, defending our hospital and doing everything I can to prevent, um, the emergency room closing down. And then, so I don't know, I think it was around noon, I received an email saying that the Board of Directors for the Perth and Smith Falls Hospital had decided not to close. There would be no closures here at the Perth site. Um, so I guess it just goes to show you that, you know, we are the Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital, but we have a campus here that we should always rally around. Uh, and, um, I felt to be quite honest with you, if that temporary closure had occurred, it would be a slippery slope to a full closure and realignment of, uh, services. So I am glad that, uh, the hospital board is, has now made it clear that there won't be any closures of our ER department. And, um, but I'm also of the mind now that, you know, after ten years serving on the hospital board, and I'm proud of my service there, that my effort should be in lobbying the provincial government uh, and our new NPP, uh, for the things we need for our person site. So my focus is now going to be doing that. So that's how it all transpired. It was very, very, uh, intensive stuff happening over the past couple of days, but, uh, I want to assure citizens that the ER, the ER at the Perth site will remain open twenty-four seven. And the care you receive there is going to be exceptional, and, uh, I want to give people an explanation of, of the past two days of that. So that's my report. Thank you. Thanks, but, okay, it was a close shape. Yes, Council Brown.
So if I understood correctly, you did resign from the board?
I did.
And you have not withdrawn that resignation?
I'm sorry, no, I haven't.
So I feel that we should have a representative on the hospital board?
Yeah, we're doing that in the miscellaneous business. We got that covered. We absolutely do need a representative. It's not going to be me. Uh, Council Bird.
Yes, if I may, I just want to make the observation that I fully support your position. I understand why you felt you had to step down. If you are going to lobby, um, and that, uh, yes, it, it, it's unacceptable, um, that, that we don't have full emergency coverage. I, I, I always get nervous when organizations denude the frontline and then wonder what's gone wrong. It's a failure of management. It's not, and it's not the community's fault. And, um, I, I fully support you in what you're saying, and, uh, an emergency is an emergency. Who wants to travel another twenty minutes to get to the emerge?
Yeah.
It, it's, it's basic core function, service delivery, and they can't fail on that.
Yeah. And I just, I, I wanted to, to make people clear, like, I, I've, I've, uh, I support the board. Uh, and I've worked very closely with the board. I've worked very hard at the hospital board. Um, but it's kind of like council. I don't always like the decisions that are being made at council, but when a decision is made, I'm a team player and I'll support that. It's the same thing at the board, the hospital board. If they had decided, which they didn't. Uh, if they're deciding on policy, and I, sometimes I disagree with the way the board's going, I'll, I'll voice that. But if, if the majority of the board wants to do that, um, then I'll support it at the end, being a team player, you know, publicly support that. But my time is to focus on other things, and that's our hospital. Um, Council Smith.
I, uh, just wanted to congratulate you on your stance. It was, um, a good move. And it may be entirely, um, the reason why they have brought it back reopening again.
Yeah. You were pretty clear on where I stood. Council Cameron.
I, I also want to say I appreciate you taking the stance on that because it can be difficult. And I think that the people of Perth have to recognize that too. And they have to bring pressure to bear on the provincial counterparts because healthcare is, uh, uh, a provincial thing as well. And I mean, I know that there is a shortage of doctors, and that system has to be looked at as well. And I think people have to realize too that doctors get overworked. And an emergency room is for emergencies as well. And when people treat it, treat the emergency room as, uh, first aid. Uh, sometimes that's because they don't have a family doctor, and that exacerbates the situation and the burnout rate of the doctors. But I think they really have to bring pressure to bear on the provincial MPs as well, uh, to do something about the situation in the emergency room. So it's not such, uh, a packed place and an unwelcome place for the doctors to be. And so I think what you did is great, and nobody in Perth wants to see that, uh, closed. And often at night is when you really need the emergency room there. So I'm, I'm glad that it's not closed in what you did. But I think everybody, all the citizens, not just in Perth, but in Ontario, have to really look at the problem in healthcare, uh, that we're having.
Absolutely. Council Brown.
Well, basically, our healthcare system is a mess. It was before COVID, and COVID made it a lot worse. I have a friend that just moved back from the US and moved to Kingston, and, um, she tried to get in with her mother's family doctor. Used to be able to do that. No, not anymore. How do you get your prescriptions renewed? There's, there's just no easy fix to, um, making the load less in the, uh, in the emergency rooms. And I can't help but think, I don't know where the CAEO is from, but the population of this area doubles in the summertime. This is, if they were going to do it, this is the worst possible time of year to do it. So, uh, yeah, you stood strong. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, folks. Um, okay, so we're going to move on in the agenda. And, uh, our next report is, uh, has to do with fifty-nine South Street, uh, zoning by law amendment. And Council Brown, you have that.
Yes.
It's fourteen point.
Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth passed zoning by law amendment three, three, five, eight, dash, one, two, one for property described as lot of, a part of lot three, north side of South Street. Plan eight, eight, two, eight, being parts one and two, plan twenty-seven R, dash, one, oh, nine, oh, six, fifty-nine South Street. From residential second density R two zone to residential second density exception ten, R two, dash, ten to permit the use of the property for farm produce stand with site specific zoning provisions as presented in report twenty twenty-two dash council dash seven point two.
All right, this amendment, um, has been duly moved and seconded. Uh, I believe Mr. Green is in the audience. Who, uh, who operates the farm that produces, yeah. Just before opening up to the floor, um, I, I, I had a conversation with Mr. Green. Um, and, you know, my position is I love that produce stand out there, folks. I just, I wish, I, I had hoped that, um, there would be a, a store built out there someday, because we need that in that part of the, the town. We need that kind of, uh, fresh produce. Uh, we also have, um, citizens who are supporting this. Uh, I understand through Mr. Green that, uh, there is one opposition, uh, to the stand. Dr. Farrier doesn't agree that, uh, it should be there. But if I understand this right, this planning, uh, amendment, this will allow, um, Mr. Green to sell produce, uh, at fifty-nine South Street. Is that correct, Madam Chair? Oh, sorry. Oh, Murray. You, okay, you are with us, Murray. So this will allow Mr. Green to, uh, to sell produce there. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. Any discussion from, uh, members of council on this?
Well, they could point out that since this is a bylaw amendment, there's a twenty day appeal period. So technically, he should not be doing anything there until the appeal period is up.
And what's the timeframe for that?
After that, if there's no appeal, then he can go ahead. But it is twenty days.
Murray, you have the floor, sir.
So it's about twenty days from the date in which the notice, sorry, the twenty days from the day following in which the notice is sent. So, uh, if notice went out tomorrow, day one would be Thursday, and you get, it's twenty calendar days. That's his owning. He still also has to go through site plan control. Uh, my understanding is that an application was filed today, this afternoon, and staff will be looking at it.
This, uh, you know, this stand has been there in various parts and various displays. Historically, he said, historically, this gentleman has had a produce stand. It was originally at Donaldson's. And then it moved, it moved on to the property where Mr. Ferry or Dr. Ferry, or sorry, built his clinic. Uh, and, and now it's at fifty-nine South Street. So I'm, I'm not, that's not, is there not some precedent here? Or historically, should this not be grandfathered in? Why we, why are we doing this, Murray, again?
So the property's own residential, uh, use wasn't allowed. So the zoning is necessary, um, to allow the farm stand, which is a commercial use. Um, this property was just, uh, a grass before. Um, and because it is a commercial use, it has to go through site plan control according to the town's site plan control by law.
Council Bird.
Yeah, I was gonna go roughly along that road, but also I just wanted to add, we are a rural community. This is a rural thing. Can, can we just get on with this and get it done?
Yeah, I tend to agree for sure. Um, Council Smith.
Is there any way that we could do it the way it was done last year and issue, um, a temporary permit right away? Um, and just call it a temporary thing and vote on it so it gets done.
So, uh, I'll refer that question to you, Murray, can, because is there some way we can, um, legislatively move this along? Berry season's here, right? Strawberries are up. So here's a gentleman that's going to miss that, uh, that corridor with, within twenty days. I don't know actually how long berries grow, but, you know, and the other stuff in my vegetable garden is growing, but here we're gonna. Anyways, Murray, sorry, I would get sidetracked. Is there some way legislatively we can skip this process?
No, it's, it's, it's an easier zoning. You have to, uh, technically, somebody could appeal the decision, so you have to be careful. People have the right to object if they want to. So you, you have to give the, you have to give the twenty days. Once that's expired, the zoning will be in force. Um, in terms of site plan control, um, the bylaws appear you, it is supposed to go through it. But I, as I said, they did file an application today, so we'll see how that application goes.
So if I, through you, Mr. Chair, if I.
Council Brown, you have the floor.
Yeah, while we know that people sometimes go ahead and do things before they're exactly legal. But the risk that Mr. Green would take is if someone complained, that at that point, he would be told to cease and desist.
Hmm. Well, we know who that is. Council Cameron.
Did he not ask us a month ago?
I, you know.
But was it not formal?
No, we're just, we're going through the formal process now, what we have to do because it's on residential lot. I understand that. I just think planning issues can be so, so, um, so much red tape around this stuff sometimes. So, uh, Deputy Mayor.
I, I hear you, and I totally support everything everybody said, but I want to give a hats off to Murray and the work he's done. Yeah. I was part of the meetings, and when he explained to us where we are, how we've got to today.
Yeah.
This could have been dealt with through the winter time last year. It wasn't. It was at the urging of Mr. Beckel that the gentleman moved forward with his the designs and the reports that he had to hand in. And if we, if Murray, I don't think, if he hadn't promoted to, prompted the gentleman, it would, it might not have opened this year at all. So I, I feel for the gentleman, yeah, he's stuck until the middle of July, but unfortunately, that's, that zoning in Ontario.
Yeah.
Can't do much about it. We're stuck in the middle, but, um, hopefully we can get it going in twenty days and.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Mr. Green, I can't recognize you at a council meeting. You'd have to, you'd have to come as a delegation. Okay.
Either way.
Okay. All right, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna, I'll call the question on this, and we'll go down the process of twenty days and, and see where we're at. And, uh, don't go from there. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's carried. And hopefully we'll just, uh, get through that period, and you'll be up and running with your stand in the middle of July. And, uh, I for one will be down there buying your vegetables. So thank you.
Just one last comment. I have had a couple of conversations with Mr. Green, and one thing I suggested that perhaps in the interim, it's not as good, but it's something he could ask to take a stand in the farmer's market on Saturday.
Oh, yeah, that's a good solution, too. All right, um, we're going to move on to fourteen point three, uh, the arterial road analysis. Uh, Council Smith, you have that, uh, before you?
Be it resolved at the council of town of Perth, except for information, the arterial road analysis as presented in report twenty twenty-two council dash seven dot three.
So any discussion? That this is going to be received as information? All right, all those, uh, Council Brown.
Question. So this is presented as information. So as part of the ongoing process, that is the point at which we're going to decide about dropping the arterial road analysis from the asset management plan. Perhaps I could ask through you.
Brian, you have the floor, sir.
So council already passed the motion removing the arterial road from the strategic plan. Um, but at the same time, ask for, uh, the impacts of that motion. And that's why this is a for information report as opposed to a for approval report.
I'm just through you. The, the motion to remove the arterial road from the, um, strategic plan is out of consent, so it's coming further in the agenda.
So further question, I mean, there's, there's a lot of people interested in this, especially in Perthmore. So I can tell these people that are interested in the arterial road that as of now, the arterial road is dropped from our plans.
No.
Is that?
No.
I'm just trying to clarify next steps.
Yeah, okay. The motion before us right now is to receive the report as information. And then we'll be discussing the arterial road as it relates to our asset management plan later. All those in favor? Call a question. Any opposed? Great. We've accepted the report grant as information. We're going to move on in our council agenda, and we're moving to fourteen point four. Uh, this is the two thousand twenty-two capital budget addition pre-engineering for road reconstruction projects. Council Smith, you have that motion?
Be it resolved that the council of Town of Perth approve a six hundred thousand dollar addition to the twenty twenty-two capital budget to fund pre-engineering work for a portion of the road segments projected to be completed within the next ten years as presented in report twenty twenty-two dash council dash seven dot four.
Excellent. That's on the floor. Is, uh, Council Brown?
So I'll ask the question I asked before. Uh, we all know about when the gentleman came and talked to us from MTO, and he was a little bit vague about exactly when these road improvements would happen. So my question would be, is there a push to do this pre-engineering work now? Or let's see, twenty twenty-six is four years away, uh. What is the reason for putting it in this year's budget?
Director Burns, I'm gonna turn to you.
So the six hundred thousand actually has nothing to do with the Highway Seven expansion. It has to do with those road segments which are listed on the wall. It has to do with those road segments which are listed on the wall over here, which council I sure is totally familiar with. So we're, we're trying to do the initial cost estimates in preparation for as many of those segments as we can get done for six hundred thousand.
I remember subsequent comment. I remember now. So the theory is that we should do the work now, assuming the costs of doing this work in a couple of years, instead of doing them one by one, we do them all now to save money in the upcoming years.
Yes, that's correct. All those in, I'm gonna call, oh, Deputy Mayor, yeah.
So Brian, where's the money coming from?
Ultimately, it comes from the, the capital reserve.
Okay, so it's not, no increase to taxpayers. This is already from a reserve that we're gonna spend money from that we planned on the future anyway.
That's
For, for example, is this part of the million dollars a year from the police savings? That's where the six hundred thousand is coming from? Or sorry, whatever it is.
There's no correlation between that. This is, this is essentially trying to avoid the inflationary cost of running the pre-engineering work out over ten years.
Yeah, but part of that reserve is, is money that we save from policing.
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the pre-engineering on the roads. Carrie. The next item up on the agenda is fourteen point five, delegation of authority by law to manage the restricted acts of council during lame duck periods. And this is regarding the two thousand twenty-two municipal election. Counsel Bird, you have that motion, sir?
Thank you. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth pass by law number five zero four six, being a bylaw to delegate authority to manage the restricted acts of council, lame duck periods, regarding the twenty twenty-two municipal election as presented in report twenty twenty-two dash council dash seven point five.
Any discussion on this motion? Saying none? All those in favor? That's carried. We're onto the next, we don't have any bylaws. We're under sixteen of the agenda and we're into motions. And Deputy Mayor, you have the motion regarding the Secretary of Perth Police Services Board, and please be advised that Counsel Bird is declaring conflict of interest, will not be voting on this or discussing this matter, sir.
So I'm by myself, sent by Counsel McPherson. Be resolved that council of town of Perth authorized staff review and set up the portable radar sign to measure speed and that the police service board work with the director of environmental services to move the device to different streets in the town of Perth.
Any discussion?
Yes, so I've said this several times. So working with Grant and Inspector Pattiachi, I know Grant's been doing a lot of speed monitoring around the town of Perth and traffic counts and stuff. And we're just trying to let the public know by way using our portable traffic trailer that some people are speeding and it gives them a little bit of a friendly heads up. And we've put it in the hands of the director to move the trailer around to the areas that he sees fit, especially in the high volume areas.
Excellent. You know, it's just a point of interest. When I was out in Regina at the FCM conference, I rented a, it was a brand new Elantra. And the GPS system in that car warned me when I was coming up to a red light camera, a school safety zone. It just made me such a better driver. Telling me to slow down here or beware of this and that kind of stuff. It'd be nice if we could have that in all the vehicles, but this is great. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. That's Carrie. Councillors, Counsel Bird has declared a conflict of interest. Okay, this is where we're at with motion number twenty-two dash one forty-five, the authorized removal of the arterial road from the strategic plan. And Counsel Bird, you have that.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth approved the removal of the arterial road from the strategic plan and return previously acquired road segments to the county, including portions of Gore Street, North Street, and Sunset Boulevard as presented in report number twenty twenty-two dash cow dash five point three.
Discussion of the arterial, removing the arterial road from the strategic plan. Counsel Cameron?
Wouldn't we return those segments? Like, did, was any money exchanged when those segments? No.
No, no, just who's gonna be responsible for these roads and who isn't. And so if council adopts the removal of the arterial road, we're gonna go back to where the county is responsible for plowing some of our streets. Any discussion on this? Any further discussion? Counsel Brown?
So I appreciate that the previously acquired road segments are one in various spots of town and it has to do with, with who maintains them, who does the snow plowing and so on. I, I just having difficulty trying to know the difference between passing this motion and that being a final decision about the arterial road no longer being a project and what further decision has to be made. Perhaps you could clarify that.
Well, if council passes this, there are no decisions to be made. We revert back to the county, assuming some of our roads and the arterial road will not be on in the strategic plan or on the horizon.
Okay, that's not exactly what you said before, but I'm happy with that. I will take that to the bank.
Right. Make sure the bank's open. Counsel Cameron?
Just one other question. If they take back part of North Street, does this eliminate the other discussion we had a while ago about North Street and North Street or whatever, when there were two Norths?
No, that's a separate issue, the addressing issue.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, I think it's community, the whole people kind of knew where I was at. This has been a longstanding, one of my hopeful projects and, and we, we've spent a lot of time certainly lobbying the minister responsible for roads on this and but I'll, I'll call the question. That's my thoughts. All those in favor? All those opposed? Sorry, Brock, were you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Yeah, so it carries two to five, two to five. Okay, we're on to sixteen point three. Deputy Mayor, you have that.
I'm myself, sent by Counsel Judy Brown. Be resolved the council of town of Perth direct staff to develop a formal facility maintenance policy.
Discussion, Deputy Mayor?
This caused a little bit of confusion at the Cal when I raised this because this is what the town staff do anyway. But what I'm getting at is I want, I want staff and council to further discuss your vision and your feelings on how long we'll maintain facilities. And while we have facilities in town that have specific dates or we've been given dates that we should be replacing them, I'd like to, I'd like the council to adopt a policy that we're gonna maintain these facilities until we absolutely cannot justify their use and them keeping open anymore versus, let's just say, pick a date, we're gonna replace them because I'm not sure at this present time, how, how we're ever gonna afford the asset management plan in the town of Perth versus and including a fifty-two million dollar sports recreation facilities because I don't see how it's gonna happen. And I, I talked briefly to the director and I'm not gonna put him on the spot or ask him questions, but I get the feeling we can't afford all this stuff and we can't afford to build new. So I'm, I'm hoping council will say, let's keep our facilities that are in really good condition right now. Let's keep them in the same tip-top condition for ten, fifteen, twenty years if we have to, based on engineering reports at the time. I don't, I don't want to just throw things out. Okay, Counsel Bird?
Yes, if I may through the chair. This again is the asset management plan, which was required to have dates as part of what, and we were required to provide it to the, to the Ontario government, which we have done. The default position of the town, as the deputy mayor has already pointed out, is that that's what we're doing. And that, no, we're not expecting on a given calendar date that the building falls down. But it's to focus the mind of councils. That's why the Ontario government has done this on asset management.
Yeah.
And we had to put a date down. So with the best advice, those dates were given. But you only have to look at the pool to see the ongoing work that we do. And fortunately, we get grants to do some of this stuff. But it's to focus the mind of this and future councils that, that were in this position. But the deputy mayor has already said, this is the default position we maintain. And, and until, until possibly another agency tells us a building is not safe.
Yeah. That's correct. And you know, we can, I think everybody knows my position on this. We should be planning for replacement. As a matter of fact, council did support a surcharge to start planning for replacement. I, whenever we get together with T.A. Valley Township, I say we're replacing stuff. They're saying, well, we aren't gonna pay for capital. And the deputy mayor says, well, we can't afford, you know, it's so, but my position is yes. We are, I, I just want to make it clear that our staff work very hard at maintaining facilities. I think what the deputy mayor wants is kind of a more overarching when and how and that kind of stuff. We absolutely have to close down. But I think we have to plan for replacing the pool and the arena and keep those plans moving forward. Counsel Cameron?
I, I think that well, I'll liken it to my car. Once my car is paid for, I like to keep it as long as I can. And I do my best with maintenance and keeping it, all the things up to date as long as I can. But it reaches a point that once it starts really costing me money, maybe this isn't a good analogy, but if it starts costing me too much money every year, then that's it. I'm not going to keep throwing money in to patch it up to keep it on the road because then I feel it's not feasible anymore. And I kind of feel like with the buildings, I think, yes, keep them once they're paid for and we're, and then you have those glory years of no real big bills and then things start falling apart and you fix it and you fix it. But at a certain point, the cost of fixing this, repairing that and fixing that, to me, it's, you're plastering up, you're throwing money away in a, in a sense to me because it's becoming too costly to maintain. At some point, now somebody has to make that decision that you're throwing good money after bad, like a, a building or facility. There must be some, some engineering formula or whatever of how long these things can be feasible. And you do have to plan for the future. Now, I don't have those figures, but they must be there. And we can't just stick our head in the sand and say if we keep patching, 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 we can have it for a hundred years because you can't for the safety of the citizens. But I, I don't think we should hurry and take down something that still has life in it. But I, I don't agree that we can just keep going, patch, patch.
Yeah.
But whatever those years are also have to be taken into account. And you do have to put money aside for eventual replacement.
Yep. It's a good analogy, the car.
Yeah, I get it. But you're the only one driving your car, not other people. So I'll give you a different analogy. We're a regional group of municipalities who use our sports and recreation facilities. It's not the town of Perth people use the rink and pool alone. It's a regional group of municipalities use our facilities. We supply the facilities to all of the region.
Yes.
We didn't ask them to build them. All they do is they pay a fee to use them. I've been told we have to rebuild these two facilities and the estimated cost is fifty-two million dollars. You sat on council for four years. Tell me where the, the three thousand taxpayers in the town of Perth are gonna come up with fifty-two million dollars. It's not gonna happen. So we need to extend the life of these facilities as absolutely far as we can until we can get to the point where we can convince our area municipalities that this is a regional pool and a regional rink. It's not the town of Perth rink. We, we did build them in the glory days where there was lots of government money, right? But we can't do that again without being able to make Perth an unaffordable place to live. This is my own opinion. So I had a brief conversation, for example, with the mayor of Smith Falls. I was telling my concerns over this and he said, why don't you think about inviting Smith Falls into discussions? They need a pool. And he said, perhaps you want to put a new pool in, in Port Elm's. Have you ever thought of that? And I said, no, because all we ever focus on in the town of Perth is we have to replace our pool and rink. And I'm saying, we need to build a regional arena and a, and a new pool. And if we can do it with partners, they're willing to work into the capital side of it and not just expect the town of Perth to take on huge debts that we can't afford. But to turn around and say, our pool is at the end of life by twenty thirty-five, if we stretch this out as far as we can. We need to finally convince our area neighbors that they need to help us with the capital. So it isn't always on the backs of the town of Perth. Because if we're gonna try and take on that debt load, you're not gonna be able to afford to live here. So instead of them buying a service, I hope the next generation of municipal councillors and their staffs, regional wide, will look at saying, how about once and for all, we sit down as a group and we say, what's the future for recreation in the town of Perth? In the T.A. Valley, in Smith Falls and in Carlton Place and everywhere else? And say, how do we want to approach these new facilities? Because I don't think you're gonna be able to see us afford it. And until then, we need to tell our staff, you need to keep these facilities open.
Yeah, and you know, I think the I think we've done a lot of good groundwork with the recreational, with the recreational report that Shannon Bayall put together in terms of understanding where we're all at. And I agree with the deputy mayor a lot, what you're saying, Ed, you've got me on side for. But it's not, it's, it's not just gonna be the surrounding municipalities in town of Perth. It's gonna be private-public relationships. It is going to be grants from the federal and provincial government. It's gonna be a perfect storm of all those lining up to replace what we have. But we should be planning for that. So anyways, okay. Development form maintenance policy has been duly moved and seconded. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. We're on to miscellaneous business now, folks. The change of the date of the committee of the whole meeting. Counsel Bird, you have that?
Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth reschedule the August second twenty twenty-two committee of the whole meeting to August ninth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried, we have seventeen point two. We have correspondence from David Solapi, Chair of Planet Youth County, or reports. Counsel Smith?
Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth receive for information the Planet Youth Leonard County report for Perth?
All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. We have seventeen point three, Leslie Richmond, the veggie stand. Counsel Brown?
Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth receive for information the correspondence from Leslie Richmond regarding the veggie stand at the corner of Gore Street and South Street. There was another correspondence from Lyle Conroy. Was that the last correspondence?
Yeah, there was.
Separate after this one?
Okay, we got that right after this one. All those in favor? Carried. And then this is on seventeen point four. This was added in miscellaneous business correspondence from Lyle Conroy, dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-second, in regards to the rezoning of fifty-nine South Street. Could we have somebody move and second that? Moved by Counsel Brown, seconded by Counsel Cameron, that we accept that correspondence. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the last item under miscellaneous business is the appointment of a town council member to the Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital. I would, Counsel Brown?
Oh, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I was prepared to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I move that we appoint the deputy mayor, Ed McPherson, to be representative on the Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital Board.
Is there a seconder for that appointment? I can't think of anybody better to sit on the hospital board as representative. Thank you for stepping up on that, Deputy Mayor. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. All right. So I think that brings us to the end of the, the dip, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
I wonder if you let me add one more thing to miscellaneous business.
Sure.
At the last Cal meeting, I, I asked to make a motion of reconsideration for the Perthmore corridor work we're planning on doing. And the clerk told me, no, it has to come forward at a council meeting because it was made at council meeting. I forgot to give prior notice, but I'd like to make a motion of reconsideration of our plan for Perthmore, the one-year trial period. And it's based on new information I received in my mind when I did the walk with the director of community services to oversee how the fencing would work as of community services to oversee, uh, how the fencing would work as well as some drainage work we had to do.
You're declaring conflict of interest?
In your interest.
Counselor Brown's current conflict of interest. So when a matter is under reconsideration, there's no debate, but it has to be accompanied with new information. Council McPherson has supplied new information of feels there's more up-to-date information after going on that tour. Going to call the question that that corridor, um, oh, thanks. We'll need a second or for the deputy mayor's motion on the corridor to reconsider. Counselor Cameron's put that back, uh, seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration? That's carried unanimously by those voting. All right. So that'll come back to a Cal meeting then for further discussion. I'm very glad to see that back on the agenda. Our next, we're going to go in camera here, but I just want to go through, our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, August twenty-third at five thirty P M. That's our next council meeting. I'd ask if there's any questions from the media?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Desmond Boy, the Perth Courier. Um, good news about the, uh, the emergency room at the Perth Hospital. That's great news. A question to you, sir, is, um, I know there's a physician recruitment, uh, physician recruiter that the town employs. Would it be possible maybe for the town to expand the role of that physician recruiter to also be looking at maybe hiring additional uh, nurses, for example, which the hospital clearly needs?
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, it's not before this council, but I, I think the, um, um, hospital board is looking at all sorts of different, different ways to, uh, to alleviate the staffing crisis, Desmond. Um, you know, my, my thoughts are, uh, my thoughts are the first love first-year nurses out there who would love to come into the hospital. And so in the emergency ward, your triage, there are four things that take place. Your blood ox, your blood pressure. They take your temperature and, you know, your, your heartbeat and that kind of stuff. I'm, I'm thinking that we, you know, maybe a plan is to bring first-year nursing students who can do some medical work into these sites and to these healthcare centers and, and, uh, there's got to be a solution because I think it's, Counselor Brown said the, the system is, was under stress before COVID. Really, uh, really took, shook people up in the healthcare profession and, um, we have to, we have to find a solution for, for the staffing because it's reaching crisis levels. So I don't know if that answered your question, Desmond?
Uh, no, that's, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I mean, I would think if, if the, if the, um, physician recruiter can hire nurses, then that would be great too. Look into that. Anyways, um, that's it for me. I should, you know, I should, I should mention something that happened in the sixties. My father had just graduated with a degree in science. We were in London, Ontario. I was just born. And the principal pulled my father aside and he said, Mike, he said, we've got a real issue here. Um, everybody's having babies and we don't have enough teachers. Yeah, the baby boom was in full swing. I'm, I was part of that. Uh, and this principal who stopped and I said, Mike, would you consider going into teaching? And my dad said, well, what's, like, I'm not sure what's, what's involved. He goes, well, this is what we're going to do. We're going to hire you as a teacher right now. And you just have to commit to going to brush a college over three summers. And we'll pay for your education. So my father became a teacher, a high school teacher. His education was paid for. He was employed right away and put on a salary with benefits because that was a crisis that faced schools in the nineteen sixties. There were not enough teachers. And what I'm, I'm thinking is you've got to pull these, these people off the road and say, or, you know, the barista at the coffee shop or something, say, you want to, you want a future in healthcare? We're going to hire you now, but you just go to school and do what you need to do. I mean, I, I don't know. It just, I don't know what the answer is. Deputy Mayor, you going to give us an answer?
I'll, I'll give you a biased comment. If you're a full-time, if you want to become a police officer, it's a full-time job. There's no such thing as part-time police officers. If you want to become a full-time fireman in the city, it's a full-time job. If you want to become a nurse, it's usually part-time work. So once and for all, the provincial government has to stand up and say, nurses need to be full-time positions and quit relying on part-time positions.
Yeah.
Same as teachers. That's how full-time positions for the healthcare workers, instead of always saying, we'll just make do, make do until the crisis is over. Hire the nurses and provide full-time funding.
Yeah, it's part of it. Anyway, sorry to go down that journey road, that story. Um, I'm going to ask that we move into, uh, closed session. And who has that motion? I believe, uh, in camera? Oh, Counselor Cameron, you have the, uh, here we are.
Wow. Oh. Um, motion, oh, that the council of Perth resolve itself into closed session at seven fifteen P M pursuant to the municipal act two thousand and one subsection two thirty-nine. Or do I have to keep going? As follows, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, a proposed disposition of land in the industrial park.
Okay, uh, the motion has been duly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, and we're going, where we going? Sunshine Room, I think, is where we're going, folks.
Have a good summer.
You too, Brian. You have a great summer.
Thank you.
Have we got Brock back? All right, Brock's back. I'm going to call this, uh, we're back in regular session now and, uh, the Rising Report. Uh, Counselor Cameron, you have a, um,
Oh.
A motion?
Okay, um, uh, be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth rise and report from the closed session at seven thirty P M?
Okay, and the rise and report is?